I know what I got.
Downloading anything yet? I hope the internet's working.
I'm good.
As long as you have an agenda, what are we starting with?
Chairs meeting.
Any other chairs meeting?
Comprehensive plan goals and implementation.
Let's see if I can get this to work.
Catherine, how are you?
Brouzled at the moment.
Oh, good, me too.
Are we expecting Carol?
She's joining via Zoom, I believe.
Oh my God, it actually opened. Is that possible?
Screens.
Okay. So I don't even need that. Okay, I feel better now. That's what I'm reading tonight.
How's the vine coming?
Really well. We got the roof all sheeted. That was good. The stuff is heavy. It's like hemlock that was growing last week, you know, and oh my man. Those like one inch fourteen footers were like, oh baby.
Be glad you got that done.
Yeah, we're really glad that's done. So we're just getting some.
We did my garage about this time of year and it started snowing early. And I said that roof is going on this weekend. So I'm so sick of shoveling snow off that concrete.
So we're psyched that's on now. We just gotta get the side done. It looks like a big pavilion right now.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Eric, do you want to come to the table, please? Good evening and welcome to this regular meeting of the Reedfield Select Board, which is going to comprise a annual chairs meeting for the first hour and then regular business at the second hour. I will call us to order at 6:32. If you would please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So on the agenda tonight, we have an hour set out to go over comprehensive plan goals and implementation. The select board goals, open space plan update process, the rec programming and potential staffing, minutes and agendas, annual reports and staff support for boards, committees and commissions. This is a different format than we've had in the past. In the past, we've had the chairs or a representative report out on what your committees have been doing, but our minutes have been so good and so up to date that we feel very informed on what everybody's been doing. And so we thought we'd use the time more productively and not keep you here longer than we need to. Eric, do you want to open with anything?
No, just a general, I guess, well, yes, general thank you.
No, not at all.
I do want to.
Matter of fact, I do. Just say thanks to all the boards and committees. You know, it's been, I've been working with you folks for about eight years. Most of you in one form or another, on one committee or another. And so I really enjoy working with boards and committees. You guys are all very dedicated. It shows in the work you do. And some of you are on more than one committee. And I think that's, that's okay. I think that's a good thing. It shows that you've got, you know, a real commitment to the community. But anyway, I just wanted to say thanks and I really appreciate working with you on the boards and committees. And the chairs bring a really high caliber of professionalism and commitment to the community. So thanks, guys.
Okay. So on the comp plan, I hope that each of you were able to access the select board agenda, which had the spreadsheet. Did you also send that to all the chairs, I think?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, I couldn't remember if that came to me as the chair or as, anyway, so it was all of us. So the, there were several things in there that were interesting. Let's see if I can do them in order.
Catherine, just be careful with the questions tonight. I've spent a week trying to forget.
Everything.
Everything, so.
I'm gonna start at the bottom because it's the sheet that I have on top. It's the staff support for boards, committees and commissions. And what Eric did was he went through and he assigned some member of Reedfield staff to assist, to have at least one member of Reedfield staff assisting each committee. So there would be some contact as a liaison for you to know who was going to be of assistance to you, either in providing you information or a contact for questions to route to somebody else. So that's an important matrix that you'll want to find if it wasn't included.
Just a note on that, Catherine, we did talk about this with the staff and the fact that we want to offer more staff support to the boards and committees. Because honestly, the select board and I are asking for more from the boards and committees. And since COVID, we've had to do more, more and more and more communication and Zoom and technological, you know, integration. So we have had a need, I think, to do more and do better. So I just wanted to make sure that the staff understood that and also show it to the board and to the public how engaged the boards and committees are with municipal staff, with the select board. And I want you to know that you have support, whatever that, whatever form that takes. It might not be someone taking your minutes. It might not be somebody regularly attending your meetings, but there are resources there. I'm one of them, but we have a lot of staff that are very skilled. So that was the idea behind this, was just a way to make sure everybody's getting the support they need and aware of that.
So rather than just say, look at it, that was pretty flippant of me. So I'm just gonna read to you guys what each of the people in the town office do and you'll know where your committee is being assisted. So Angelica, who is our board secretary and an awesome deputy clerk, assists the budget committee, the planning board and the select board. Matt Rodriguez, who's our cemetery sexton and also on the maintenance crew, works with the cemetery committee and the trails. Chip Stevens, who's our CEO and licensed plumbing inspector, works with the planning board. Dave Ledoux is our assessing agent and he works with the board of assessors. Eric, we all know, works with the board of assessors, the budget committee, the comp plan committee, the enterprise committee, the Marana Cook Lake outlet dam committee, the road committee and the select board. Karen Peterson, who's the transfer station manager, works with the solid waste and recycling committee. Kristen Parks, our town clerk, is working with the H friendly committee, the board of appeals, the heritage days committee. Matt Seams, who is maintenance and our deputy road commissioner, works with the road committee and conservation. Melissa Small is our librarian, so she works with the library board. Imagine that.
Interesting.
And Teresa Shaw, our finance officer, works with the budget committee and the rec board. The connectivity committee is ad hoc and is not currently seated, so they have no one working with them. The fairgrounds working group is an ad hoc committee and they don't have anyone officially working with them, although there are two select board members working with them. Sean and Steve.
Well, there's only one select board seat.
Yes, Steve is a process. Leader?
He's a leader.
Jerry.
The parks committee is ad hoc. Do we have anyone on that committee, Eric?
No, it was formed, we met once and had a barbecue at the beach and then we kind of didn't really go in place, so.
So that's why those people have no one assigned to them. All right, so going back up, I am pretty certain that all of you are aware of the comprehensive plan goals. You all gave input for the comp plan and should be aware of it. It was on the town meeting vote. It was voted in in June. The goals were laid out and Sean and Eric and I at least were not impressed with how the goals were listed. In the old plan, if you remember, we had like short term, long term, short term, medium term, long term goals. They were set out for like the planning board and the select board and then a few other boards. And we didn't get any sort of a guide like that. We got about 200 pages of spreadsheet that we had to thumb through. So we had KB cog go through and make us a bit of a matrix. And that's what Mike said you guys did receive. And I went out, or I went through and I printed out. So for instance, I'm the chair of the solid waste committee, so I printed mine out. And when I printed out just my page of it, that's it. I'm just one front and back and I'm in just one category. So that's easy for solid waste. I didn't print planning board out because I knew Paula could do that herself and it was really long. I did print out all the others and stapled them and that's what I would recommend that you folks do as chair is maybe even download it just from the spreadsheet, download your part, save it as its own Excel spreadsheet and then distribute it to your members. Because then you have it electronically. You can print it. If you don't want to do that, you have somebody at the town office now that you can call and ask them to please do that and put it in a mailbox or have you come pick it up if you need 10 copies of it printed off. You can do that, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. The part for me that's really good about that is solid waste, I'm just using me as an example, is I see that there are two goals. In those two goals, one of them has one strategy, the other has four strategies and it lists for me who all the people are that I'm going to be working with. So it's pretty cut and dry. One thing that we were clear about, you other members, please chime in.
You're doing so well. I just.
One thing we were very clear about before people were voting on this was to say that the comp plan was not an ordinance, it's not a law, it's not something that has to be followed and implemented, it's a guidebook. It's what we think the town would like to do and since they voted it in, we have a better feeling for that now. Some of the things in there fall into the, we must do these things because those goals were laid out by things that we know have to happen because of law. The majority of them are more directional. It's the way we think we want to move forward. And we realized that something came up at our last meeting. There's a new subdivision going in somewhere over in the Manitoba camp area. And it's not in one of the village zones. And in the comp plan, it said that we would like new development in town to be in the village zones or closer. You know, not use up the open farmland, woodlands by developing it. But that's not where somebody wanted to build and they have a permit and everything they want to do is legal, so that's where they're doing it. So even though the comp plan is a guidebook that says we'd like this to happen because this is permitted, they can do this. And we have to realize that over time, some of these goals may change. Hopefully, we won't let the comp plan get as old as we did this time before we redo it. But you know, over five or 10 years, a lot of things can change. So what we've set out as goals now may not be applicable in the future. So we want to view this as more of a roadmap rather than something that has to happen. Eric did talk at our last meeting about having an implementation committee. And I think the goal really of that committee is to just make sure that we keep looking at these things and we don't forget that we made this plan and just ignore it. So it's, it's not going to be like a school curriculum where you pay thousands of dollars for it. You put it in a book, you say, good, got that done, file it away, don't ever look at it again. We want to try and avoid that syndrome. Any questions on that or comments you want to make, things I might have gotten wrong, Jackie? Can you go to the mic? You have to go to the mic. That's for our audience.
I just want to say that there was not a page for us in the comp plan. So I'm here, but there was no page for us.
Didn't get a page in the spreadsheet, Eric, for H friendly committee?
No, for the library.
Well, there was some Zoom, Jackie's age. Peripheral references, but yeah, there wasn't really a strong focus on, on that. There was focus on community development and other things related to it, but.
Rather than departments, it was boards and committees.
Yeah.
Okay, so the library was be used as a board. I'm sorry, I got you wrong. You're not H.
I just want to point out that we did, you know, I'm here, but there was no, you know, list of things to do. Not that we're not doing things.
Doing a lot of things, yeah.
We are doing things, but I just wanted to say, yeah.
Great, thank you for that. Select board goals.
Want me to do that?
Sure, Sean's gonna do this.
It's cool. So we had our retreat on September 11th.
And this was in the packet online.
And we, you know, we reviewed last year's goals and some stuff we were looking forward to trying to engage in next, in the coming year. I think what was very clear is that the current boards really believe that we got a lot of good stuff happening and our focus is to finish what we have happening and sort of work to implement what's going on. So the new goals, new goals for 2324 are fairgrounds. The plan is due by December 2023 to be available to vote on by June 2024 at the town meeting. There will be an update on that later today, this evening. Then the church road sidewalk. So we're working through the planning and phase. We've had another public hearing about that. There's a lot of good things coming from that. We're gonna hear more information on where that's going next.
And just a quick update, we set a date last week, two weeks ago, Eric. And just a quick update, we set a date last week, two weeks ago, Eric. What day was it? Was it the Tuesday after Martin Luther King Day?
Oh, for the...
The next sidewalk public meeting?
Oh, I can't tell you exactly, I'm sorry.
I think that's the day we picked.
That's the last vacation he goes on, just before, before Select Board meeting.
So that'll be a Tuesday, like, the third Tuesday in January, in January. So we have, we are moving forward.
And then the RSU 38, so this is a goal that we continue, and it's really working on building that relationship with the school, and access to the community space, and kind of building that relationship back. Community building, so this is another goal. So grow sort of communication participation, and relationships with our volunteers. We know it's hard to get volunteers now, and as many of you are on many boards, many hats these days, but we're gonna keep trying to work on how we engage folks in town, and how we can diversify some of those populations, and really get some meaningful work for people to wanna be a part of. Another goal is the Community Programming Director. That is a weird title, that's just something we threw in as part of this goal, but really to oversee and think about management of the beach, recreational opportunities, library, fairgrounds, sort of an entire position that we're thinking about that might be an important goal. So, so of those goals, the fairgrounds completion plan is something under my name, although Steve is very actively assisting with that, among many others. The church road sidewalk is under Carol. Steve and I are part of the RSU 38 conversation, but that's mostly just Steve. He's been doing that, I haven't helped him. And community building, that's Carol. And then Community Programming Director and Information is Dave and myself.
So I don't have to do anything. I'm doing ordinance review and policy review, because we found that we have ordinances that haven't been looked at since like, 1999, and I think some that are older. So I'll be getting in touch with Paula to say, "Hey, did this get rolled into something else?" Or...
Which we think has happened to.
Or is our mass gathering ordinance, which I remember we made up after the Phish concert was at Oxford Plain Speedway, and lots of towns in Maine made these mass gathering ordinances, because we didn't want them in our towns. Like, maybe we don't need to review it, but we really oughta look at it, because it looks bad when you look and you say, "Wow, we haven't even looked at this in 24 years." So I'm going through those sorts of things and figuring out where we're at with them.
So one of the things about, you know, sharing our goals is we're really hoping that at one of your upcoming meetings, you can talk about how those goals may or may not impact your board, and, or how we might have not thought about how it could impact your board and how it should. So just different ways to look at what we're trying to do in the world that you're trying to do.
So, in thinking about how to kind of move forward into like, the open space plan update process, that's a really interesting one. There are like, five committees that are gonna need to work together on that. I think we're envisioning that that's going to be similar to the fairgrounds project, where there are a lot of different people working together, and probably not have five committees come together, but maybe have a rep or two from each of the five come together, like we did with the fairgrounds group, and kind of figure that out, see what we can come up with. So this is what I, I was thinking about this today, and I didn't know how to do it, so here's what I came up with. One of the key areas the Select Board has identified as being vitally important to our town is for all of us to work together, employees, volunteers, and the Select Board. To this end, we all participated in the long process of reviewing and revising the Comp Plan, which was approved by voters this past June. Many of the tasks that were set as goals for each department, committee, and board are ones to be worked on jointly with other folks. To facilitate the smooth implementation of goals that are undertaken, it is imperative that we all work together with a common goal of what is best for the town. There will be times when folks are in agreement, and other times when decisions have to be made with compromises. We, the board, want to stress that while each group has value, no group is more important than any other group. And learning to accept that we cannot always get exactly what we want, but that we can get a large part of what we want by listening to one another and compromising, is a good way to move forward. The overarching theme is what is best for our town overall. And that really feeds into our goal of trying to finish things that are started. And we're not gonna budget for new projects until we finish the projects we've started. And we want to just bring everybody together into this place of all being on the same page. So in this manner, we expect that folks will work together, listen to each other with open minds, learn to live with some things being just what we want, and other things being those we can live with because they're important to other folks. This way, we can move forward, making Reedfield more of a place that serves everyone without creating hard feelings. The Select Board is here to guide folks through the process with the town manager, so reach out for whatever help you need. I'll just leave it at that. It's something we have been talking about pretty regularly at our meetings. Part of our updated policy for public participation was in that being, trying to make it more accessible, so that people who come to a meeting know this is kind of the agenda that we follow, and this is what we do, and these are the things you're allowed to talk about, and these are the things you're not. And by the way, the things you're not allowed to talk about are things that pertain to employees. Other than that, you can talk about anything you want.
Careful.
But employees are a protected area, and we can't do that, because that violates the law. And so we're just trying to bring as much together as we can in this idea of cooperation, and just because I want something my way, and these three guys tell me, "No, you can't do that," then I just have to back down and say, "Okay," even if I am chair.
Still gotta back down.
Still gotta back down. So I'll skip around a little bit. The minutes and agendas, we've seen a huge improvement from everybody on that, and I'm hoping it's not the responsibility of any of you in the room that you have a secretary that's doing that for you. If not, I feel for you, because I have to do it for my committee. But it's really helpful, and we have now started putting the draft minutes up. Is that correct, Eric?
Yes, particularly for Planning Board and Board of Appeals, and Solid Waste and Recycling. Not because they have, you know, current pressing matters, they have some, but it's because they meet quarterly. And so waiting three months for approval is a long time to wait.
Right. And this is something that Ralph Eno really, really pestered us about the entire three years he sat on the Select Board. And it was important to him, we had been trying to figure out how to do it staff-wise. It is more work for the staff to have to put up the draft minutes, and then hear from us that we approved them and changed them from draft to approved. But really, for the public, and as Eric said, with solid waste, it's, it's kind of pointless to read the minutes in March of something that happened in July or October. It's probably not pertinent anymore. It really doesn't let the public be involved in a timely way. So a big thank you to all of you for getting those in. It's making a big difference. Annual reports, annual reports will be coming up, Kristen will want them in March, I believe. And remember that annual reports are not for the year we're in, they're for the year that finished already last June. Am I right, Eric?
Yes, it's for the prior year.
Okay. And so we have to be careful that we put in the right stuff. If you wanna put in stuff from the current year, just separate it into two sections. So like, in fiscal '23, we did blah blah, and in fiscal '24, we did da-da. And the way I end up doing that is I go back and look at my minutes from my committee meetings, and, "What did we do?" Oh, I can write up my little report. The sooner we get that in, the easier it makes Kristen's life and the fewer emails we'll all get. So we're up to open space and rec programming, and I don't think that's me, Eric, so I'm gonna hand that over to whomever.
So, yeah, well, I guess with the open space piece, I know that the Conservation Commission has been working on that, so maybe it'd be good to hear from them about what work they've done, and where they see that heading. Might be a good place to start.
That would be fine. Is that you, Bruce? Or is that you, Jerry?
Actually, Jared Shaw, I can just hear you very, very briefly.
If you could come to the mic and give us a very, very brief, that would be awesome.
Jared Shaw has taken it upon himself to go through all the records, look at deeds, and thoroughly investigate all the legal things involved with properties. And I think he's, I know that he's done all the town properties, he may have done other properties that look like open space, or as he calls them, open areas, which is what we're supposed to do according to the law. We can get to that later. So really, that's about all I know, but he's got this huge spreadsheet with a lot of different information in it. Maybe we should give it to the Select Board. Would you like it?
Oh, yes.
Got a lot of information.
Yes. I've actually seen a draft of it that Eric had, and it's, it's really useful.
Yeah, he did a great job.
Right, and it, I mean, it lists the property, you know, who's actually the person in charge of the property. I don't know if they're called the owner or not, but like, if it's KLT, or it's some other group, or it's the cemetery, it's the town, what the deed restrictions are, if they pay taxes or they don't pay taxes, all sorts of great information.
He's a very detailed person.
Yes.
He's a good person for doing this.
Well, I think that's really useful, because then as you go through these different tasks, and try to figure out what belongs in the next open space plan, that should make it a lot clearer.
That was his goal when we did this, was to kind of get ahead of the open space plan, so we could make the whole process go easier.
So I guess what we need to do is decide how, how we would like those different, I mean, the, the boards are the Age Friendly, Cemetery, Rec, Trails, and Open Space, I mean, and Conservation. I think those are the five that we would like to all have a voice in the conversation as you're going through the plan. And I think the idea was to take the current plan, which was 2005, does that ring a bell to anybody?
Sounds right, yeah. And it was a very good plan, and it's an exceptional blueprint.
Yeah, but it is 19 years old, and things have changed. Like, a lot of the trails we have in town were not here in that time period, and I hope that they're considered kind of part of open space. And they should at least be mentioned, because they're a wonderful way to get people out into space. So do we wanna do like we had done with the fairgrounds group, and say we want so many people from each of these committees, and we want a process person? Do we want these committees to do this on their own? If we want it to get done, I think we need to give some direction. You know, like, this needs to be done in one week, this needs to be done in one year, this needs to be done in two years. Obviously, not one week. Looking for input from the audience, as well as fellow board members here. Go for it.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Hannah.
Like, as you're talking, I just had a question of like, what are we reviewing, what exists, and then like, just updating, I guess, like, what you expect from each of us in the committees would be helpful, to know what kind of...
I think so. If you, I don't know, in the email that you got, you should have gotten a copy of the spreadsheet. And in the spreadsheet, there's a section that is yours, in the tabs at the bottom. It'll tell you the conversations that Rec should be prepared to be involved with. So I'm looking for some direction here from the folks up front, as well as anyone out there. Bruce, Jerry?
While Jerry's coming up, I'll just say, I really appreciate the fact-based approach that the Conservation Commission started with. We had challenges in the Comprehensive Plan discussions around what was open space, what was conserved, and so having that classification is gonna be incredibly helpful for this next item, which the Select Board head said, "We wanna get the Comp Plan wrapped up," and then we're gonna start moving into the open space plan. So I just, I really appreciate Jared's work and the work that's been done and so forth, because it, it is the exact right, best place to start.
Jerry Blyer, I was, really just had a question. Is there the expectation that there will be some professional assistance? The, the plan back in 2005 was greatly assisted by a contractor, and I didn't know what the thinking was for the upcoming plan.
Yes, is the answer. Did we budget for it? I can't remember.
Well, that would, I guess, we, we didn't budget specifically for consulting services for the open space, space plan. We do have some professional services funds available for planning broadly. And so we, I think, thought about planning at the beach, which is really a subset in a lot of ways of the open space plan, but, but independent in its own way. But, so we have, I think, I think we increased the budget to 10,000 for planning services, so we can have work done at the beach, we can have work done with the Comprehensive Plan, and we may, it turns out, need some of those planning services for some work on, on the housing bill. We have some money available from the state for that, but that may or may not be enough. So, but we do have a bucket of funds available for planning services, I'll put it that way.
Okay. And that might be something, if we can get a group to convene in the next couple of months, so I know that the holiday months are coming rapidly. If you, if that group can decide what they think a possible sum might be, that could be put into the budget, so that we could have that information for the coming year, so there would be funds available to begin the process now. I mean, if it's a quick process, because you like the plan, and you don't see a whole lot of changes, and you just need someone to make them, it might get done this year. But if it's something that's gonna require a lot of revamping and modifications, then we could budget for that through the budget process. But no, we don't expect you, Jerry, to rewrite the plan. I know that's where you were coming from, I think, so.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I'd just like to clarify that I agree with Jerry, we need someone to write the plan. But I think we also need facilitators at the meetings, like we've had in the fairgrounds meetings in the last year. That was very successful. It created a good outcome that the previous year had been difficult to create, so.
Good. That's good to hear.
Yeah.
So do we wanna just tackle that right now, so we don't have to do it later, and these folks can be involved in that? Steve, you're good process. Scott, you wanna do it again?
For everybody? What do you mean? For who?
This is Sean. Part of my hesitation to speak so far has been that the current working group isn't finished. And I think that will have a big impact onto part of this plan. And if I'm wrong, someone tell me I'm wrong. But I feel like if we're talking about open space and a particular parcel that we're looking at right now, I feel like that's gonna be a big portion of that discussion. So I would personally like that wrapped up first. And before we really, because I do think there'll be a lot of the same players there that will be engaged in this conversation. And it's a lot of time and effort, and I wanna thank the people that have done this so well, like Bruce was talking about, but also, let's, let's make sure that's done before we tackle something else. And that, that's just my thought.
So you can start in January?
Well, I think, I think even that's a little too soon. And I, and I think because we wanna get to the point where our final plan has voted on, and we're yea or nay, and we know where we stand. And I think that should be a part of the discussion. And I think it's great that Jared started a lot of these other pieces for us, but not knowing what a big chunk of that might talk about is, I think, worth waiting a little bit. Unless somebody has another part...
I don't mind the waiting, well, I mind the waiting part, but I understand that. But I don't think the fairgrounds is a big chunk of the open space, having seen what all the different parcels are all around town. It's not just town-owned kind of open space.
I agree with both of you. No, I mean, I, I would agree with Catherine that the fairgrounds substance, but the people involved in the fairgrounds working group, and the people involved in the space, and so in that respect...
Yeah, that's my concern. I just feel that the same people are gonna be engaged in that conversation, and... in that conversation, and...
So would that be like, should maybe our plan be to just kind of continue that group, but change the focus, so when that group gets to the point where they have wrapped up the Fairgrounds process, and feel that they've done all of their work?
There may be individuals from those respective committees that want to switch out.
Yeah, and I think we might want to rewrite the ad hoc, we might want to see if there's a different group that wants to be a part of it, or not. I think if we made this decision tonight about who would be on it, who's running, I just don't think that makes sense.
Well, I think it...
But you know, as soon as you have a good idea, though, you could kind of bring it for our next one.
In thinking about that, Sean, I mean, we do have, we have a limited set of resources with the human capital, I really do think that you're on to something right there. But I think that we do need some time to maybe set this up the right way. One thing I'm thinking about is, we just talked about the Parks Commission that was formed, and really, that was kind of a group that was set up with representation from those five committees you talked about, so maybe it's Parks and Open Space, or maybe it's just Open Space, but that might be...
Or maybe it's a great thing for this new program director to be the facilitator of it.
Oh, exactly, yeah, but...
That we don't have yet.
We don't have yet.
But so I think that the two things that we can work on in the interim would be making sure that we have the right model, and I think the Fairgrounds working group has been a good model, it's been certainly a model that we've been able to learn a lot from. So I like that, I like the idea of maybe putting that forward, and we can also work on maybe finding some of those professional services, and also, you know, reaching out to professional consultants, but also reaching into the community, and I'll just speak for Carol, because she's not here, and say, maybe someone in town has a skill set, they'd be willing to volunteer to help us out with that. I think it's unlikely, but I think it's worth asking the question, right? So I think that if we can, in the next couple of months, two or three months, right, work on finding the structure that we like, and maybe just not reinventing the wheel, but re-appropriating or reallocating some of the resources from that Parks Commission that's been idle. But really, looking at the consultants, and looking at what other resources we can bring in, that could keep us busy for a couple of months, and give some time.
I think if we put something in the messenger for the next couple of months, too, you know, about, this is something, please come in, talk to someone, you know, throw my name, I'll talk to anybody that wants to be on it, and just learn who might be interested, as we kind of build it up a little.
Hey Catherine, I've got a question.
Conservation, and maybe Jerry from Trails.
Catherine, I've got a question.
Sure.
I'm sorry, this is Carol, calling from Indiana.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
I can, hold on, um, one second.
Whoever that was? Whoever is trying to talk needs to just speak.
Sorry Catherine, this is Carol, and I guess I'm on some kind of delay? Carol, and I guess I'm on some kind of delay?
There, now I can hear you.
Sorry, I'm calling from Indiana, so I've been listening, and Eric, thank you for mentioning, asking local people to maybe do some of the work in place of professionals. I am a big believer in that, and I would like to maybe understand more of what the Open Space Committee is doing, are, is this, like, do they have a mission, or I guess, I'd like to revamp of what exactly their purpose is regarding open space.
That's laid out pretty clearly in the comp plan, there are pages of policies and strategies that were listed, and that's where they're going to go from.
But in a nutshell, what is...
I can answer that.
To take the plan that's current, which is twenty, nineteen years old, go through that, and decide what needs to be done to make it relevant, which would either be an update or a revamp. Is that pretty close?
That's what I was going to say.
Awesome.
But I, that's the whole comp plan you're talking about, I'm just talking about the open space portion of it?
No, there's a plan called the Open Space Plan that's existed for nineteen years.
Okay. So I guess my, my feedback on the comp plan in general was, a lot of it was written by people, professionals, and large portions of it didn't really identify as Reedfield, like, you know, focusing people to settle in the village where there's no room. I guess I would like as many local people to have as much to do with it as possible, with some guidance maybe of outside, but that's the thing, is it has to fit our town and our current circumstances, and, you know, the wishes of our people. So I would like to take the time on forming the committee, I for one would like to be part of that committee, so I don't think we roll one committee into another, but kind of open it up as a whole new committee in the proper channels we normally do form a committee, I would appreciate that.
Thank you, Carol. I just want to clarify that the comp plan was written by people from Reedfield, and by Reedfield residents, and there was assistance given from KB COG in a more of an editorial capacity. And it was voted on and accepted by the residents, and so our responsibility as a select board is to follow what the voters instructed. Whether it's my personal belief that that's the correct direction or not, isn't really relevant, because the voters are the ones who control that. So that's the way we're going to proceed, and I think, I'm hearing loud and clear that we need to take a little bit of time, and put together a new committee, do some advertising, figure out just how we want to present it. And back to my question for Bruce and Jerry, do you think that not starting it until like next summer is too long, or is that acceptable?
It's acceptable, to my point.
Perfect.
Thanks, Bruce.
I think by taking a little extra time makes it go faster and smoother in the long term, and so.
Yep.
Take our time.
Right.
Don't lose focus.
So what we would not want people to do then is to say have, I'm going to pick on Hannah, because she got up before, so we would not want the rec board to start really working on open space, and like be all gung ho, and getting things together, and like, okay, we're ready for when they start next July. Let's all wait, and take a measured approach, and be thinking about it, but let's wait and start the real work once we get the structure, and we'll try and get that group appointed prior to July. So we'll go for like April, May, June, to get that committee formed, so that you guys can start working on it then. See, that's why we needed to have this discussion. Yes, you do have to go up to the mic, Rob.
Rob Peel, Trails Committee, I just wanted to clarify that Jerry is not presently on the Trails Committee.
You're not? Were you?
No, never.
Well, I guess I don't know much, I'm sorry. Thank you, Rob, is Trails your group? Okay, are you okay with us waiting?
Yeah, no, I think that's fine, because I agree with you, many of the same people at very least are going to be interested in following the process, I expect to have the overlap of questions asked.
Great.
I also think I'm going to get Trails Committee members to follow two or three senses.
It's you, Rob.
Well, you are a Trails Committee member, Rob, so, you know.
So Rob wasn't at the microphone, but he did say that he agrees, and he would love for more Trails Committee members to be involved in this aspect of things. Okay, so that's our open space plan update process, and then the last part would be the rec programming and potential staffing. And I think I know what the first cry is going to be from people, are you talking about another position, are you talking about paying a staff person to do something, and why do we need this? We're just little Reedfield. So I think that's the discussion, am I right? Those are the questions we have, and those are the things we need to find answers for, and we need to do it fairly soon, because we want to put something into the budget, if that's a direction that we want to move in. Some of the issues that we have are a huge number of children participating in the rec program, and a lot of complicated scheduling, and arrangements to be made, and different things to be purchased. It's now, is it for all four towns in the school district that participate, and they come through Reedfield? And this is becoming a bigger burden in the town office for staff that is currently here, in terms of processing orders, helping with things like, why does a ref have to get permission to do this, or to get paid, and who has to talk to who, and why did I have to get it approved ahead of time instead of after the fact, and why can't they just get cash the day they're working? And, I mean, the questions go on and on, and it's taking a lot of staff time, and these staff people already have things that they're doing, so we're trying to look at, can we change some of the things they're doing so they have time to do rec stuff? Or do we need somebody to do rec stuff? Or do we have too much rec stuff going on, and we shouldn't be providing these services? Which I think would be silly, but if we're going to look at it, we ought to look at all the situations, you know, is there a desire to have rec in the town? I think the answer's obvious, with the hundreds of kids that participate. And how can we best utilize spaces like at the beach, and at the fairgrounds, and on the trails? Sean, Steve, Eric, Dave?
Our gig that we've been talking about, but I don't think it would be a, I think, Sean, as I, and I had talked about, I don't think it would be like a total position, I think it could be, we could utilize some of what we already have to make this work.
You know, you think about the beach superintendent, that's for four and a half months of salary?
A little less than that, it's actually, we have it down to about ten or twelve weeks.
Three months.
Yeah, but it's full-time for ten of them, and then part-time for a couple on the other side, so yeah.
Yeah, I think there's lots of ways to look at services in which people want in town, and that we're providing, and how many of those are run on volunteer basis. And sadly, volunteer basis is not easy to sustain these days, and there are less and less volunteers out there, so I don't want to take away anything from the volunteers that are doing an amazing job, and I'm very grateful for all the boards, but it's getting tougher to sustain the variety of programs, and to build on those programs that people are asking for, you know? It's really hard to get that going.
I would love to, from a personal perspective, gather a little more data about like, how much time is being spent by volunteers, and what are they doing, you know, and how much do they feel part of their burden could be relieved, and that would be helpful. I want to, I want to do everything we can to support young people in the community, that's bottom line, right? The question is, for me, I don't know enough about how much time, I know for some individuals, but not, I don't see the big picture. I don't know if anybody knows, the big picture knows all that detail, so I feel like we need to like, almost, you know, do a little survey of what's being done, and do a needs assessment, what do we need?
Is that what you two are working on?
Yep, and I think it's important to, although we've mentioned the children twice, that's not the only individuals that it can support, right?
That's true.
We have a lot of, for the last, the beach has been free for four years, and so that revenue has gone, that we used to get for the beach, and one of our big goals was to make sure we were offering programming at the beach. Now, I really try to get Eric to go down there and do yoga for everybody, and he keeps saying no, but we do have, you know, people in town that are interested in providing those services, but it takes somebody with some real skill to organize and maintain those services.
Maybe you're asking the wrong guy, maybe Dave would like to do that. He looks like a yoga master to me.
Is this why I got isolated on the side? Go dance over here.
You know, I think the beach is a big area of our town that has not changed in a long period of time, and programming is something that will drastically affect the usage and the way in which we can move things around. For instance, you know, when we do, when Eric and I have worked on programming for swim lessons, although we've not had that due to staffing at the Y, even just engaging in that discussion for the spring probably took ten hours of Eric and I's time, easy?
Yeah, and that was when it failed, when we did it.
And that was just Eric and I's time for it to fail, and so not including when we did run it, and people were coming in and paying, so I think, you know, we know there's a lot of things that could happen, and I'd like to hear more things that could happen for us to support and move around.
Get a good picture of what people want, and then what are they willing to pay for, you know?
Carol, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I think we have a really good resource in the audience, maybe, I think Hannah's there, and I think she's the one that does the bulk of this, if I'm not misunderstood, maybe she has some insight of the hours spent, and, you know, I'm sure tonight's and weekends are not necessarily nine to five, so I don't know if she has some input tonight while she's there.
Well, you're getting her up out of her seat, Carol, good job.
Thanks, Hannah.
I can add a little bit to this discussion. So we, as a rec committee, appoint a commissioner of each sport, the three sports that we, well, four, softball and baseball are spring sports, basketball, and then soccer. We were asked recently to support maybe cheerleading, and others have asked us to start a field hockey program within what we're doing, it's really hard to start something else, I'm going to be honest. We've asked for people who were interested, like people who came to us to say, can we start one of those programs? Yes, will you help us start it? If you have the interest, if you have the kids, like, let's start rounding them up, and then we'll figure out how to support it. But getting that to materialize while we're supporting what we're doing is hard, time-wise and hour-spent. So each commissioner of the sport kind of takes on that sport for the season, so I will say, like, I'll name Matt LaJoy, who was our baseball commissioner last year, who also pretty much fielded softball, our softball older teams went to Augusta, so that became a discussion, but sending the twelve years over there, keeping the younger kids here in Reedfield, and then still organizing eleven different baseball teams besides the softball teams, so that's a lot, once you, I mean, it's a lot, and when you think about all the signups, we're trying to do online signups to make it easier for everybody, so that's part of the burden that falls into the town office, and how that's processed. And then, once you make teams, no one's ever happy with how you made the team, so, or not everybody, so bringing in kids from everywhere, and not knowing, you know, which kid lives next to another kid and needs, you know, mom can bring Tuesday, but the other mom can bring, or whatever, that then becomes part of the team dynamic that has to get reworked, it seems like, as much as we say, this is your team, this is how it is, so it's to be reworked pretty much every season. So that's a whole nother constant, I'm not sure the emails or phone calls stop once the season starts, so, or that commissioner, so that's a lot of time spent for somebody who's also working full-time, trying to help us run.
And you're talking hours of work a week.
During a season, yes, and you're the commissioner, yes.
Okay, not like three or four hours, more like ten or fifteen hours?
No, more like, yeah, three hours every day, like, or more, because you're fielding all of this while you're still trying to organize.
Six hours every Saturday.
Yeah, plus you're trying to organize which fields which teams can use, who can sign up for practice times, like, it's a lot of juggling.
So that, the numbers thing I think is important, because you used the word a lot, a lot, and I understand why, you know, but I feel like that's the key piece, to start to quantify some of that, and like, and I'm sure you know some of those numbers, and some of the commissioners could help you, but I just feel like that's what we really need to try to make clear to people, okay, these are the things that are happening in town, this is the work that's going into making them happen, right? And then, do we want to continue to support this? Is it sustainable by volunteers or not? How much of it is sustainable by volunteers? Those kind of, those are the questions we have to ask and get answers to.
Well, as you were talking, Hannah, I'm thinking, you're doing this for all these different towns and so on, and maybe we, as you two are looking into this, the other towns can help contribute to this, because that's, that burden has just been lifted from them, and so if we're looking at needing a position to coordinate this, or to help with coordinating it, you know, we don't need to necessarily let the volunteers off the hook and do nothing, because that, I mean, it's good for them and for their kids and everything, but maybe each... but maybe each town needs to play a role and that's something that we should really consider. You know, if we're gonna look for, say, I'll go real low, we're gonna look for $5,000. Reed Field doesn't need to come up with all of that. We could ask the others to contribute.
I will say, totally unrelated issue, but when I met with the board chairs in the other towns to talk to the school district about getting the use of the bathrooms at the, at the high school for youth sports, they were really into the idea of, wow, there's more things. I remember when Trent Emery from W.A.E. was like, man, there's so many things we should be cooperating on. Let's give them a chance.
Right, I mean, they could be really happy that they don't have to do any of this themselves.
But also to give their feedback, like Steve's saying, to be involved in the processes.
Absolutely.
We have a quest, go ahead.
My last thing to say would be, a logistics person, even if it's 10 to 15 to 20 hours a week, would be like the best thing that could ever happen to the rec program, I'm gonna be honest.
We have a question in the chat before, Eric. So Elaine asked, would this personnel be supporting age-friendly programming? The recreation component of the comp plan was modified to include programming inclusive of all ages covering all seasons. I would just say, I believe that is what we're talking about. And what Dave and I are talking about is what, how else would this position impact people? And what other information can we gather or hear from people about how it could be beneficial in that way?
So I just wanted to make a couple of statements. The volunteers are contributing a tremendous amount of time and energy, way more than I think they ought to be. And I'll just say that we're really bursting out the seams with our rec programming. And it's everybody, it's not just youth sports, it's the, you know, the age-friendly activities, trying to coordinate those. I mean, they could use help with their Reed Field youth programming. The library has been doing their own kind of vein of community programming, lecture series and all these other activities, even outdoor snowshoe hikes, which was a cool thing to see. But there's so much happening already. And the shame of it is that we're not doing it very efficiently. And we have so many wonderful opportunities, so many things coming up that we could be offering. There's so much potential. It's just you look forward and I look forward and I say, wow, we have so much we could be doing. But boy, we're really hurting with what we're trying to do right now because everybody's pulled in many directions. And we have, you know, staff that are trying to do their best they can but can't always. And we're trying to communicate policies and protocol and financial procedures. And we have turnover and we have volunteers that are coming and having to learn a position. And then two years later, somebody else is coming and learning the position. And so there's inefficiency in a number of places. And I've seen firsthand a lot of the conflict that some of those things can create. And it's not, it's not negative necessarily, it's just, it's what happens when you have a lot of people doing a lot of things with a limited number of resources. And I will say that I've watched over the past eight years, the town of Reed Field develop and grow more and more and more programming. And people love it. It's one of the most successful, one of the most well-supported components of the services we offer, right? And so that's a wonderful thing, but we've been kind of squeezing and squeezing and getting, you know, every little bit of water out of that dishcloth and we're dry. I think that we don't have capacity to do much more. And like I said, it's getting to the point where there's inefficiencies, there's, 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 things are starting to fray a little bit. And I really think this is important for us as a community to move forward and succeed, to have, to take what we have, which is a lot, a lot of volunteer time, a lot of staff time, particularly at the beach, and put together, you know, part-time, year-round position that's basically full-time in the summer and part-time in the rest of the year, at least that's my idea. But it could be any combination of those type of things. But we have so much there. So I'm really glad we're having this discussion. The fairgrounds ties right into this. I mean, when we expand that area, we're gonna have so many more opportunities for programming. We could do, we could do field hockey there. We can't really do it now, it's not big enough, I don't think anyway. But so there's, there's just a lot there. And we seem to be having this, this weight kind of pushing us forward. And it's, and it's not, not a bad thing. It's a very positive push from people saying, we want more. I think it's our job to do this, to make this happen. So I'm really, really glad that all these boards and committees are engaged and working on it. Because I think that we have to do something to make this better. And to make it work for everybody and really meet the needs that are out there. Anyway, that's my piece, I'm glad we're talking about this.
Do we have any questions from anyone online?
I have a, just a thought kind of to tag off of Eric is, this is the one of the most successful programs we have for the children. And we've done it all without paying people, but it is very time-consuming. Besides the library, who we definitely support, who has some really awesome programming, I think this is something worth an investment to make sure it continues to be well-run. And obviously, it's taking a lot of personal time from the people who have dedicated their time so far. So if, and we're right now in the midst of budget season. So I don't know how this goes about being budgeted, but I would be totally in favor of any kind of like part-time position or whatever would make that work. Just because it's definitely needed for, not, you know, the great athletes, but the ones that are curious about certain sports and become our great athletes later in life. So it's a well-worth investment, I think, in our community.
Thank you Carol, that's all good things to hear.
And without getting too in-depth in that tonight, I mean, it's not necessarily, there's potential to self-fund it in a sense. I mean, there's, there's many different ways, especially if we have the whole fields complex over there, concessions, tournaments, I mean, any or all of those things, you know, just hitting on little pieces of it. But it doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna be funded not by itself in an extra expense, so.
Right, and some activities can be activities that are paid for. You know, if you want to go have yoga with Eric, you might not be paying for that. But if you want to have...
Dave, then you're really pony up, right?
But if you're gonna have yoga with Dave, who's the professional...
I will fail miserably.
Who's the professional instructor, you know, you might have a small fee associated with it. The people would be thrilled to pay because they're only going to the beach or to the fairgrounds or to the town office to participate. They don't have to join a club in some other town and travel there and so on. So I think, that's great, Dave.
And one of the things I think, to Hannah's point, with the volunteers, that I've lived that life. And it always, it's always the four or five that pull the whole cap, you know? But one of the things, food for thought that I think we used to do with football, is we required so many volunteering things and you had to put a deposit check at the beginning of the year. And if you didn't volunteer at all, then you lost that deposit. So, and people may just say, hey, here's your 200 bucks, I'm not doing it. Either way, there's a lot of ways to fund and streamline, as Eric said.
Right, and there are lots of different ways to, for people to participate. Not everyone can participate with time. Some people can participate with money. Others can participate by providing rides. Others participate by doing office kind of work, creating spreadsheets, doing scheduling and things like that. I do think we have to be very careful, especially with the number of volunteers that we do have in our community, of not placing a burden by pressuring professionals to volunteer their livelihood professions for the town's benefit. I think if people want to provide some assistance and some input, that's reasonable. But I think asking someone to work for free for the town on a big project is risking maybe losing their volunteer effort. We have to be respectful that people have to earn a living as well as, as doing their volunteer bit. So I think there's a fine balance there that I want to make sure we walk carefully along. Do you have any questions from the audience that's present in the room? Rob? I, well, you can crawl if you'd like, but you do need to be at the mic.
Well, I just, from my personal experience, and this is a long time ago because my kids are more than grown up at this point. But when I was involved in sports, there were people I would ask if they were gonna bring their child to soccer, for example. And in some people, the answer was no, they couldn't afford it. They don't have health insurance, what if my kid gets injured? And that's just people I knew because they were my son's friend and I would talk to them. There's gotta be many more people out there that are in that boat still. So I'd just like us to be very careful about how we try to fund these things. We do have to charge people that can afford it, obviously, I would say. But we've also got to work on finding ways so that we don't leave people out. And there are people that won't accept charity. I don't know how you deal with that, but, you know, I'd love to find ways to deal with that too. So it's just another thing for everybody to think about.
Thanks Rob. I think, you know, just, we, I keep saying we, I'm not on rec anymore, I haven't been for a little bit. But, you know, one thing that's important is, I don't think there's been a kid that's wanted to be on a sport that hasn't been on the sport. We have a good relationship with RSU Elementary School that know most of the board members or have kids there currently, so, or teach there. So there's not many kids that have fallen through the cracks. So that's lucky right now. But we do mention scholarships in all of our postings currently in town.
We've been all those same things.
Yeah.
But that doesn't necessarily get a room.
Yeah.
I've had a tap in today.
Well, that's another way that you can ask the community at large to participate, is to fund scholarships like that. You have people who donate, you know, X number of dollars annually or whatever for baseball, for rec programming. And if nobody uses it, then we don't use the donation. And if kids need it, they do. A lot of towns have that, so. We need to be broad-minded is what I'm hearing and very aware of everyone's current financial position. Okay, well, we've kept you eight minutes over. Thank you so much for coming, I think it's been a good discussion. Really appreciate everything you do for the town all the time and especially for coming out for a kind of boring meeting tonight. But we had a little entertainment with the yoga instructors, so.
Yeah.
Well, if we had a demonstration, it would've been far more entertaining.
You may feel free to leave and not stay for a meeting, but if you want to stay, you're welcome to.
It's as hot as me, huh?
It wouldn't be much of a demo because I'm twisted up just about as much as I can.
That's all you got, that's it?
That's all I got.
Oh my god, I think a yoga off between you and Eric would be highly enjoyable to watch.
Why don't we plan it for the opening day of the beach?
Opening day of the beach.
Opening day, yeah.
Is that what you are, a crowd?
I'll make...
Hannah? Thanks Hannah. I just happened to look at the open space for rec and it just says, "Plan for the acquisition and community park and recreation development." So it's just to be involved in the conversation is really...
Hannah doesn't do that, she doesn't help anyone.
Take care of yourself.
Thanks. It's really just to be involved in the discussion of where's it going. But we don't want it to just be, okay, Trails is going to do all the open space planning and so everything goes in the Trails' direction without other people getting involved. We just want everyone to have a voice, not necessarily to do a lot of heavy lifting.
I mean, that's been, I think, the most effective thing about the Fairgrounds Committee is working group, is just getting all the different voices in the room. I think we have to continue that in basically everything we do, really, to be honest with you.
When it's a joint project, yes.
Right, yeah.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna move us into our regular meeting. The first item up for approval are the meeting minutes, which I sent to Angelica. Too late to be put in the packet because it was Wednesday late and they didn't work on, for Thursday late. They don't work on Thursday and Friday was a holiday, so anyway. Okay. Ah, yes. So it was mostly grammatical things and a little bit of conversation that I thought was needed that was left out. Would that be pretty clear?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I would make a motion to accept the minutes as amended by Catherine. If anybody would like to discuss that, now's the time. Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. If you disagree with them at a later date after you read them, I will ask. Carol, do you...
She bears them?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm not sure what I was supposed to ask you.
Because we can't see a hand, just say yes or no.
Carol Dornbos voted in the affirmative, so it is unanimous. Okay, and the next item on the agenda is the warrants, number 21 and 22. And I think, were those both Steve?
Yeah.
Okay.
So warrant 21 was payroll for the employees, that was $25,000, $28.37. And warrant 22 was the treasurer's warrant. And that, the highlights I would say would be, well, we do our usual category, which is basically hauling stuff away. So there's Archie's for $25.72, Troyano Waste for $775, EcoMaine for $1793, and then AAA porta-potties for $475. So all of those go in the category of just hauling stuff away that we don't want to have around anymore, right?
Oh, I like this, this is good.
We did all four of those, okay? And then, some of them are pretty self-explanatory. I don't think I have to say what this is for because it was Morton Salt was $15,240. And New England Salt was $16,754. Guess what those are for?
French fries?
Yeah, French fries.
A lot of french fries.
I have to admit to be, being curious, like, why Morton Salt and New England Salt? Is the Morton Salt for the seasoning and the New England Salt for the roads? Or, it seems like a lot of salt for seasoning, so I assume it's just two different vendors for some reason? I don't know.
But Teresa said, you do realize that was $33,000 of salt? And I said, yeah.
Yes, it was, it was $33,000 worth of salt, which, God.
It doesn't go into the ditch and have to be dug out and fills them up and causes flooding problems, so that's good.
Yeah.
It's not sand.
Except it runs in the lake.
But it still runs in the lake, it's still salt, you know, something to think about. But anyway, that was, yeah, $33,000 worth of salt, okay? And then, there was a white, white sign, they make a road sign for $1,036. And then repaired the overhead door at the transfer station for $882. Got run into by a piece of equipment, got caught on, what was it, the emergency?
There was a release lever string that was hanging down and got caught on the tail of a chipper and dropped on the back of the truck.
Right, yeah. So that was not good. So those are all relatively smallish things, relatively. Because the others were $338,000 in change to the RSU, regular payment. And then, the first 20% to Horns Construction for plowing, which was $79,135. And then, so that's roughly, like I said, about 20%, the first 20%, then the next six months are prorated and then they get their last 10% in May, so.
I'll make a motion, oh, you weren't done.
No, I was about to say, and so that totals up to $508,924, $508,924.73 for article warrants 21 and 22.
Make a motion to approve warrants 21 and 22 and the amount stated.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those present are in favor, Carol?
Yes, please.
So it is unanimous. I did better that time.
You did, I really liked it.
Of course, my mouse is on super scroll. Okay, next thing is select board communications. If any member of the select board has general information they would like to provide?
Well, I would just like to give a big thank you to Angelica for organizing the Veterans Day celebration and also for delivering the keynote address or the welcome to that, which was definitely not in her comfort zone, but she did it and did a great job for it, I understand. So I think that's really cool. So congratulations to Angelica for that.
That's great.
That was there, it was great. There it is.
If I can tag off of that, I'm sorry, the room looked amazing, Angelica. You transitioned it into a very patriotic setting. And thanks to the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts and the trumpet player and the library, there were a lot of different people that showed up and made it very special for veterans. So thank you all. So thank you all that came forward and, and provided.
Excellent. Okay, we will move on. Thank you, everybody. There my, Boards, Committees, Commissions, Boards and Committee Minutes listed separately. Did we receive those from Kristen? I don't remember seeing that we got any.
No, there was none in the packet.
So I don't think there were any. And I bet I can make my screen bigger. Look at that. Okay. We are now up to public communication time. We have two members of the public present in the room. Would either of you like to speak? We have one member of the public online. Would you like to say anything? Okay, we will move on to old business. We will hear and consider an update on the Fairgrounds project. And who is that coming from?
That's coming from me.
Okay, take away, Steve.
It's pretty basic. Last week, Hannah, were you at the Facilities Committee? Because you often like to go to those meetings. I'm surprised you weren't there, but. Yeah, you're, you're otherwise booked. That's too bad. But Jerry went to the Facilities Committee meeting last week with the RSU because I was otherwise engaged with my grandchild. And he said that the conversation with the Facilities Committee was actually quite cordial and, and, you know, they were, they were interested in working with us, but not on a basketball court. Just feeling like they really didn't have a place that would work. That, you know, we had talked at the last meeting, I mentioned that the possible, one of the two sites you looked at was up by the kitchen near the football practice field and that's, looks like it's going to be used for CDL training. And so that's out of bounds. And then the other site we looked at was down behind the, the middle school. And there issues were several. One is that they said that, you know, a lot of folks, when they come to watch a baseball game or something like that, they'll, especially if they're elderly or handicapped, they'll park right along that way and look at the games from there. That would be not available if they had a basketball court there. Insurance issues, they're concerned about that. Their, their insurer said that if you have a basketball court there, you have to close the entire parking lot, not just the part where the court would be. That was, but anyway, bottom line is, there's a lot of reasoning behind it and we'll discuss it at our next meeting. We meet again next week. I want to say it's the 21st, I think. The 21st?
What day of the week is it?
The Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
That would be the 22nd. 21st is Tuesday.
It's the 21st, it's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday.
21st, the Tuesday.
Okay, so that's when we meet next. But that's where, until, you know, bottom line is that we'll be discussing where we go from there.
I can't attend that meeting.
That's okay. We'll talk about you when you're not there.
And I guess my two cents on that would be back to the statement I made during the Chairs Committee that I, I would hope, and I'd be happy to, Eric, I think I would like to submit that and have it put into the minutes. I'll give it to Angelica. I would hope that if people are looking at that plan now with the Fairgrounds, that they will keep in mind that everybody can't be a winner. You know, if we're debating about the basketball court, we're either going to have it or we're not. And we need to look at what's in the best interest of the town as a whole. And so some people will not be thrilled about it and some people will be very thrilled about it. And we need to try and base the decision on what's best for the town. If I really don't want it, can I live with it? I, I think that group has worked really hard to make their decisions based on that and I'd like to see that continue. I think it's very important.
Steve, just a food for thought thing on that plan, even if it's not included funding-wise, could it be planned so there is a place for it to go in the future over there? So, you know, donations, however it might happen in the future, that we could build it?
That's a good point. We, we haven't not even gotten yet to the point of, of funding, you know, minor issue there, right? But, I mean, without question, that's a possibility for sure.
I mean, if we set aside a place for it to go in the plan over there, then we can always build it at a later date if that's the worst case.
Right, because it could be, it could be a two, three-stage process depending on what it looks like for both overall cost and funding options in Grant, you know? So that, that's, that part is down the road, but for sure, it could be built into the plan that says, you know, okay, well, looks like we can't quite fund it yet, but we can.
Might have been part of what did a little fire enough is because when we looked at that plan that was all laid out, these were all things for auctions, but there was no option for the basketball court in the drawing, so.
That's off-putting to people. It's not in the, it's not in the spirit of compromise. And that's what I'm trying to get at.
Right, yeah.
Is that everybody can't win, so some of us have to be willing to settle. And that's a really important thing and it's a good lesson to show our children.
I, I feel really good about the working group and consensus and support on a final plan coming out.
I do, too. And I, I think one of the things that I think is important for folks to recognize, and I, I loved it that that many people came out and were really passionate about a basketball court. But that's why we said, this is where we are now and what else is out there now? You know, and, and we listen to feedback and, and act on that. You know, I think that we've been, we've done two things lately, which we've done a pretty good job of, of getting to folks and getting them, giving them a chance to get their feedback and then really listening to that. And I think the, I give a lot of credit to Eric and to Goro Palmer, the engineers in the sidewalk project. I mean, those meet, public meetings have been really constructive. And the engineers have really listened to people's ideas about, okay, this is what we want to see. And they've come back with things where they incorporate those things. We intend to do the same thing, right? So.
Touching on that sidewalk thing, I think it's been very useful to have the engineers become the facilitators for meetings.
Yes.
It's, you know, the same thing with you. It's a person who is one step removed from all of the dynamics in the room and about the project. And I think that's really helpful in having a process and seeing something come together that everybody can say, I can get behind this. So that's great.
That's where we are.
Okay. Thank you for the update. I appreciate that.
No problem.
Building off of what Dave was saying, I'm going to assume that if there's funding, if it's in the plan and there's funding available and we're not talking about using local tax raised dollars, then we would do it. So even if you come up with a phased plan, if we have somebody who says, we'll give you the whole amount.
Well, and that's what I'm saying. I mean, if there was a place designated for it in the plan.
Right.
That maybe it's not part of what is budgeted or whatever we end up with for grants, the donations, however it's done. If there was a place for it and somebody stepped in and said, I'll build that.
Right. And, and you know, that, that's one of the reasons why it wasn't in the first proposal we made was that we were really sensitive to overall cost. You know, we were like looking, okay. But then folks said, well, we really want that in there, so, okay. Then we'll see what it looks like.
I'm going to disagree with you there, but that's.
You don't, what, you don't think so?
No, no, I think people didn't want it. It was not in the table for discussion until we had that public hearing. It was totally negated from the discussion.
Really, you don't, you don't think it was just that some folks were concerned about trying? We were.
No.
I thought, I got the impression that some folks were, were thinking that overall, trying to, one of our goals was to keep the cost down.
No.
Oh, cool, all right.
So I think it gets back to my discussion of that we all need to try and work together for the betterment of the entire town as a whole. And that's just going to be my theme for the rest of the year. That's the teacher in me coming across.
That's a good theme.
Here we go.
That's a good.
So on that note, we're going to move on to our next thing, which is to hear an update on the Church Road Sidewalk Project. Eric?
Yeah, well, you guys have already sort of touched on that, but, yeah, so Catherine, I think that you were right. I think it's the 16th.
Tuesday, the 16th.
Yeah. So that's tentative. I did confirm that date with the engineers. They are available, so we can do that. Thanks, Hannah. And so, so we are going to have that public, second public hearing, or the third, I guess, third public hearing.
Yep.
And continue that process of public input and revise the plans. And the other thing I wanted to report on is that we, we have made progress with the engineers continuing on with, they're developing their 50% plan. So that's what's going to be presented in January. But one of the steps that's been taken most recently is coordinating with utilities. So they sent a survey out to CNP, to the, not the Gusti Utility District, the.
Winthrop Utility.
Winthrop Utility District. And, and so we got responses from them about who owns what holes, what, what the deal was with the water pipe, where it's located, diameter, all that stuff. So we're getting into that more detailed information about what's actually happening at grade, below grade. And, and now that we have a fairly firm plan, given the feedback we've had so far, we can, we can go to that next level comfortably and not feel like we're going to be risking having to go back and redo something. So that, that action is good to see and it's, again, leading to that 50% plan that will be presented and discussed at that third public hearing.
Great. Okay, and we'll get that posted up on the website soon so that people have almost two months of notice?
Yes.
That would be great, too. We'll move on to the next item, which is 24-047, Select Board Retreat Action Item Reporting, five minutes. I'll begin. I didn't do anything on my tasks this last two weeks. Sorry.
We reported out of order, I think.
Yeah, we, we gave you our update during the Chairs meeting.
You didn't?
Yeah.
That's fine.
I think we don't have anything else to add.
Okay. Steve?
Yeah, now, the school has been pretty busy for obvious reasons of late. And so the last two weeks, we haven't had another discussion about any of the other things.
Okay. Carol, do you have any update for us?
The one thing I did was reach out to, I'm blanking, I'm so. The fire chief put the notification of Veterans Day on the sign in front of the fire department. And instead of giving me the letters, he did it for me, which was really awesome. I appreciate that.
Okay. I'm not sure I understood, but Eric is not.
She, she reached out to Chief Mank about using the sign, which we discussed last time. And rather than just giving her the letters, he did it for her.
He did it for her?
And she appreciated that.
Oh, nice.
That was the statement.
Nice job, Lee.
Thank you, Carol.
How'd you translate that? Is that some type of language?
I'm assuming you just knew that already, right? You didn't get that from what you just said.
You guys don't do Zoom meetings often enough, do you?
And thinking, so thank you, Carol. I mean, in thinking about that, I, I want to take back my comment from last time. I don't think we should have any Select Board members having access to town buildings, the fire station or the town office or the transfer station buildings. We're not employees. We don't have any special reason, really. So I think if we want to have X, if we want to be able to do the sign, either have the fire chief do it, which was very nice of him to do, but not required. But I like the better suggestion of getting a set of letters for Carol and she can keep them at her house and just make sure that you're only putting up things that have been authorized by the town office, so that, you know, it's not other things. But I'm uncomfortable with any of us having that responsibility of being in and out of town buildings. I don't want to take that on and I don't want you to feel you have to take it on. Does that kind of make sense to everybody?
Yeah, it's fine. I'm, I'm good with that. I have to admit that I, I was glad to hear that, that Lee had done the sign because it was really well done. The letters were like much better than I'd ever been able to do. I'm like, how did Carol do that the first time she ever did that? It was so good. And, and so I, I was kind of relieved that Lee did it, so that makes me feel better. I have, yeah, I'm all in on that. That'd be great.
So Eric, if we could arrange to get a, a set of letters for Carol?
Yes.
I think that's a wonderful thing that she is taking on and that will support her. And that would be great. Okay, moving on to new business, item 24-059, Consider a Liquor License Renewal for the Weathervein Restaurant and Lounge. Before we begin, I have to ask Eric, did we get a signature on the request?
We did not. I called, I think they, they might be out of town. So we did not. So two options, you could either just say, well, we don't have a lot of confidence in this piece or, or maybe not even that far, but just say, we, we would like to wait until we have a signature. You can do that, there's probably time, but it's, it gets a little bit tighter towards the end of the month. If we could do it on the 27th, that, that could work. Or you could approve it and then wait for them to come in and sign it and the board can come in and sign it after they've signed it. But do a, a conditional approval, basically. So that would be an option.
So I'll just ask the pleasure of the board. As I was reading through the proposal, I saw that the application is not signed, so it's really not a, it is not a valid application. And so we cannot sign it because the applicant didn't sign it themselves. So as Eric is saying, we could go through the process and then once they sign it, we could come in and sign it, or we could just reconsider this at our next meeting.
Just to prove it pending signatures, make a motion like that.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. We, I'm not going to make us be that formal. So Eric, I don't have to hold a public hearing, is that correct?
No, and that should be another, maybe an addendum or even a separate motion just to say, we're going to waive that public hearing.
Okay. So before us, we have an application from the Weathervein Restaurant, which is actually called the North Shore Restaurant Corporation. The two proprietors are June Jennifer Cottinoir and John Anthony Cottinoir. This is a application for an ongoing business. The license approval needs to be by December 14th, I believe, is the date I saw on Sean's thing. Because they are an ongoing business in town and there have been no complaints, we have the opportunity to waive the public hearing. Could I have a motion to do that or a motion to actually hold a public hearing if that is your pleasure?
Make a motion to waive the public hearing for John and June, proprietors of North Shore Restaurant Corp.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those present in the room? In favor, Carol?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
It is unanimous. So before us, we have a liquor license application for the North Shore Restaurant Corporation. Finding that it is not complete because it was not signed by the two applicants, I would take a motion to approve once the application is complete.
So moved.
Dave, you said you'd be willing to do this. Come on, you can do it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license for John and June Cottinoir. Was it North Shore?
Yes.
Pending signatures. Is that the right way to say it?
In blue ink.
In blue ink.
Which it does state.
It does say please.
Does it say that?
It says.
I missed that.
Is that like midnight blue or navy or? We're getting.
Can I have a second, please?
Second, second, second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? I'd just like to say I appreciate the willingness of the board to work with the proprietors of the restaurant in town. I think it shows our support and I hope that we would do this for any business that came upon this situation. So with that, all those present in favor, and Carol?
Yes.
Yes.
It is unanimous. Okay, moving on to item 24-060, Consider Steps for the Comp Plan Implementation. I assume there's something in here. Eric, you have given us a statement here. Is this basically that you would like us to approve this and let you advertise?
I'd like you to consider it.
Okay.
Well, and I just want to say, this is just one step, right? We wanted to talk about steps. Talking to the Chairs tonight was a great step, you know, and sending out information is another step. Perhaps forming an implementation committee to help shepherd these, I think it's like 30 pages of recommendations, is another step that could be taken. I think it's probably worth the effort and investment of time and resources, but, but it's certainly up to the board. It could make your jobs easier. Another step that's being taken is the Select Board will be reviewing quarterly per the schedule that we've had in the past, the comprehensive plan and particularly the portions of the plan that the board itself and perhaps I am responsible for. So we have a precedent for that piece. piece. Uh, we also have a precedent for, um, having a comprehensive plan implementation committee. Um, it was not, um, uh, in place for the full term of the last committee. Uh, I think it ran for, for three or four years, maybe after the, the plan was, uh, initially adopted and then kind of faded away. I don't know the full history, um, but we, we did have one of these in the past. And I think it would be good to at least pursue it again. Again, if the, if the board has an interest and if we can find interest in the community, um, this type of work is, is administrative. It's not necessarily exciting or engaging. A lot of it is directing, um, and trying to help other people find success in, in what is their charge, uh, with all these individual elements. So it, it might not be easy to find people is what I'm getting at. Um, just like it wasn't very easy to find them to, to jump on, uh, the comprehensive plan. Um, if we formed the committee and sustained it, it could be the basis for the next comp plan update. But, uh, I just wanted to kind of put those caveats out there. I, I think it's worth trying, but, um, it might be a challenge.
Well, I have one comment. I, under the task, which is on the second page of the proposal, I would suggest rather than hold regularly, regular scheduled meetings, not more than monthly, I would suggest that they hold them quarterly, uh, more like the solid waste committee, which is more along the same lines of an advisory committee that's looking at the charter and, uh, hearing a report out of what has happened and saying, we think that direction is good, or we've heard this from people and we think this would be a good way to, to kind of change direction or whatever.
Yeah. I mean, I thought the same thing. And my reasoning is just because we have the plan and there are things that we're hoping could come out of the plan, we, we don't have an overarching, thou shall, thou must, this has to be done. It's a, it's a guide. So we just heard from a bunch of committees that are tapped for time. And so realistically, we know that there's not, might not be updates in a month. There might be a little update in a quarter. Um, I think we want, if any, we can get someone to engage in this, we want it to be meaningful.
And I would suggest that they either meet quarterly a month before the select board quarters or quarterly the month after the select board quarters. So they're either providing us with information for our quarterly review, or we're providing information for them. But I wouldn't have us meet at the same time, you know, recording out.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that it be a, a coordinated kind of effort. And, uh, I, I'm fine with asking people to do it. I don't know that we're going to find anybody who's interested, but.
You guys are making it sound so appealing.
Well, we, we pulled teeth to get people to be on the complan committee. Um, not literally, but figuratively.
Glad to hear that.
It was suggested, but, uh, we opted.
So based on the proposal that Eric's giving us, is this something we would like him to move forward with? Or do we feel there's not really a need? Is this something we could start a year from now?
I'm not sure if that's rhetorical, but yeah, you could. Um, but you also want to make sure, uh, there, there was that same statement, um, that, uh, Rob Peel made about, um, something about, um, it wasn't, but wanting to, um, I think it's Bruce, actually Hunter, um, with the open space plan. You want to keep an eye on it. You don't want to lose momentum. Um, but, but you, you know that, um, if it's not the right time, then just make sure that it gets brought back up.
I kind of feel like at this time, just worry about dealing with the things that have to be dealt with.
Which is our goal.
Right. And in the, uh, I, I kind of get the sense of the title of it kind of implies that we're gonna take this document and we're gonna go down through it line by line and we're gonna do everything in here, kind of, you know what I mean? But I think at this time, let's just deal with what we need to deal with and maybe revisit it six months or next year or whenever.
I agree with you. I, I would be happy with us doing a quarterly review and just seeing if
Something's come out.
If anything has come up, has anybody talked about anything? If nobody's doing anything, then maybe we need to light a fire someplace. But I think we just heard tonight what, what the first fire is we can light, you know, and it needs to be something in, put it together in March, April, so that people can join up in May, June and maybe start working in the summer.
Yeah.
Um, so I think that really follows along with the input we got. So let's hold off on this now. Eric would be the recommendation and maybe we could bring this up at the select board retreat next year and see if that's a good time for it.
Just about to say that. I think it'd be a great thing to revisit as part of the goal structure for next year.
So who's going to keep a list of that for us, Angelica?
Angelica?
We make a little tab, reach, you know, um, August 2024 retreat items?
Hey, aren't we in charge of programming?
Okay.
I appreciate the decision. I think it's, it's, you know, I don't need a motion or anything, but I think it's great that you're recognizing the, the amount of work that's, needs to be done in other areas and this is, so this is good. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Carol, are you all right with us making that choice?
Sorry, had trouble unmuting. Yes.
It's no problem that you're a little delayed. Not at all. Thank you. Um, Eric, I'm assuming all those pieces underneath of that were all related to that?
That, that's just the scope of, the scope of work. Um, those are all of the goals and strategies that are in the comprehensive plan, um, that need to be considered or, or, or not need to be, can be considered and discussed if the need arises.
All right. So I'm just scrolling down to get past those.
Yeah, you want to get to page eighty-four.
It was almost ninety somewhere.
We're, we're not going until nine o'clock. I can just tell you guys that right now. Okay. So we're up to item 24 oh six one, consider the format of the June town meeting warrant. And that is what's on page eighty-four. And I think we're, Dave, you might not be quite as familiar, but you were around a lot in the spring. So I think you're pretty familiar with this document. The rest of us should be. So Eric, what are you, are you asking us to change something or just, are we happy with this? Do we have suggestions?
This is part of our, um, process for the budget. Um, just, we had scheduled a discussion about the format, um, kind of really a, a check, cause the, 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 the format of the warrant, what articles are included, how they're sequenced, uh, all that stuff is one of the fundamental pieces. Uh, it, it, it's kind of like the capital reserves discussion, or, um, you want to start with that piece a little early. So, um, I guess I'll point out a few things that I think.
Well, does it fall in line with the discussion we had with Marty, that Marty kind of, we worked on and?
Well, so that's part of it. Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. Um, that, that piece about, um, how you handle the capital items. I think that's a good time to acknowledge that, right? Right now you can say, well, as far as our structure, we want to acknowledge that and that type of thing. Yeah.
And so before you go forward, which I do want you to do, um, the next item is about the administrative ordinance. And I think you're pulling a couple of things maybe together that are in this warrant into the administrative ordinance?
Yeah. And that was one of the points I was going to make is that we're trying to find some efficiency here. And so there, there are some articles early on, um, um, particularly one about, um, the collection of, um, past due taxes. Um, and there's one later on about, um, oh, where is it? It's further down. Um, we have an item that talks about, um, expending, expending, uh, grant funds for their intended purpose. And that's another one that can be moved, I believe, into the administrative ordinance. So, um, this ties into that next piece, but those are two of the changes that are there. Particularly talking about not doing things, um, until we finish what we've started. Um, there's a, probably a, a chance that we might have a, um, an article relating to bonding, but right now I don't see that as being a high likelihood. The only possible outlier on that would be, um, if we decide to move forward with something at the transfer station. Um, so that's one thing that can trigger, um, a, a borrowing article. Uh, but that, that, that article obviously is there if we have a need. Um, and so it may or may not be there next year. Um, other than that, all the articles I expect to stay very much the same. Um, we will almost, um, a few more ordinance articles just from what we talked about last. Maybe we talked about five or six ordinances that need updating. Uh, some of them required by state law, some of them just generally needing it. Um, so.
Eric, can you remind me of the process in which the agencies, so, um, let's just take.
Twenty looking at, for instance.
I, I'm talking about the, the sexual assault agency, the union meeting house, the food bank. What is the process? So are you just like, you know, Ralph got it on the ballot last year, right? And so we voted for Maranaq Food Bank. Is that just now in perpetuity going to list there until somebody says, hey, let's take that off?
That's the general approach. Yeah.
So for all of these agencies?
Standing request.
Do they ask for different amounts or do they just expect that Town of Reedfield is going to give a thousand dollars to the Kennebec Behavioral Health?
It's, it's a combination of things. Catherine or Dave, yeah.
Yeah, it's, they have to submit a letter and because these are agencies asking for donations from a town rather than donations from individuals, they know that they have a town voting what everyone is going to choose to donate. And so that's kind of a tricky thing because people usually like to make their own choices for who they donate to. So in these letters, they typically provide an explanation of what is the benefit to Reedfield residents. So for instance, I know, like the family violence, uh, you might say, um, we serve seven Reedfield residents in the past year. Or the Spectrum Senior Health says we have X number of Reedfield residents participating. We have so many drivers that assist and so on and so forth. Um, so I don't think we usually get something like, well, we're asking for fifteen hundred and thirteen dollars out of a two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar budget. I think they, I don't think they give us all their budget information.
No, and then there is a process to, to bring, that you have to get, um, a petition to get on the warrant. And then, um, once you're there, you're not allowed to increase your request by more than, I think, five percent annually, um, without going back to the voters to getting, to get a new, um, mandate, basically through a petition process. Um, so it's not as if once they're on there, they can just throw, well, I, I got, I want twenty percent more. It doesn't work that way. They'd have to petition to get that increase.
So I'm going to interrupt you. Don't lose your thought, but I think this is something either you or I need to write an article about, or the budget committee does, but it needs to be part of that, um, it's not propaganda, um, educational piece for the public. How does, how does, uh, these, whatever Sean asks, how do those appropriate?
How do these warrants get on there?
How do these donation articles?
I mean, I'm not saying that.
Get on the warrant and remain on the warrant? And what is the limit? Because I'm sure other people want to know that. And that's something we could even put out in our little newspaper thing where we explain things. Um, it could just be a paragraph above the beginning of this section of the budget, um, that says, for an agency to be on the warrant, blah, 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 blah.
And the board, um, one of the things I was going to say is the board has taken these individually, but, um, you know, I think that it, it is a policy, you, you could consolidate some of them. Um, but that's a tricky thing to do, uh, because we ran into that same kind of question about, um, capital ends. A lot of towns do, they put nonprofit donations, one article. Um, and that, that works for some, some do it.
It's not when we get voted down.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't like that.
It's like a pulling your hatstrings thing.
Well, yeah, we've never had any get voted down in recent history. So, but, but, um, it, it's, um, you're right, Dave. It, 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 um, it is, um, something that, that is, is tricky. Um.
I just think it's lazy as a nonprofit to be just sending a little letter and expecting it's coming back every time.
I mean, they, they do send us a letter. If they, if they don't.
We don't put them on.
We don't put them on, so.
They send us a letter.
They have to renew their requests, but when you think about it, for five hundred or a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars, your executive director is going to write a letter. We, we don't, we don't.
They're not going to write it. A secretary is going to show that.
Well, yeah, but, but you know what I mean? But that's, that's the process is that, that they do have to re-ask for it. But it's, it's in their interest and it's a kind of a, almost a given that they send those letters out.
Uh, uh, yeah, okay.
Uh, so I, that's excellent, uh, all the way around. And I think it would be disingenuous of us, especially this year, to group them together in one heading, based on the conversations we've been having with the public about not putting too many things together. Things that, that go together, yes, but I think especially where they're donations, I want to let people make their own choices.
Is there a way that you could put that on there with the option of voting yes for all with just checking one box or voting no for all for checking one box or, or excluding anything in between on a no? Uh, or is that a big pain in the ass?
I think the machines only do up and down. So it's yes or no.
I think that there's, there are some limits to what we can actually, because we have a secret ballot vote, um, I think the questions can, themselves can only be yes or no.
If we had on the floor, we could do that.
Yeah.
Somebody could move to accept, you know, the next seven articles as a group.
Yeah, I mean, we could look at combining some, some groups of things that are similar, but I, I think, you know, you, you, you're probably right, Captain, about that being a little bit tricky.
I mean, I really took it as a question. I just, you know, there's, I just think there's a lot. So are the food banks going to just get a thousand bucks for a while? Whereas.
If they send us a letter, yeah.
Right. Maybe next year they need more than.
There's like, what, seventeen thousand there total?
Yeah.
Yeah. It does start adding up after a while.
Well, so if the food bank wanted to have two thousand dollars this year, which I thought we should have asked for last year, um, they need to come with a petition that says we would like to have two thousand dollars. And they need to go through the process just like they were new because it would be more than what they can increase by.
More than five percent.
Right.
Don't quote me on that. I, I'm trying to remember the policy.
No, that's fine. I think, to be honest, I'm not really worried about that. I've just, I just think I want to understand it. So when I ask that question.
Sure, yeah.
And I think I get asked it every year, but I think I know the answer every year and I just forget it because it's just.
Can I ask a question?
We're not alone in having a lot of these.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm sorry. This delay is driving me crazy. Um, and if you recovered it, I apologize. Um, but. Is there a way that if we could say, if this happens for so many years, it just becomes accepted? Like going forward without it having to be voted every year?
No, I don't, I don't think we can just take it as an expense. I think that's more what you're asking.
Or just if we, if it's under a certain dollar amount and it's approved by voters for so many years in a row that it just becomes acceptable. Maybe that it's not allowed, but it sounds like it'd be so simple to just, some of the, the little dollar amounts that are for like social services that after so many yes votes.
I, I don't think that, I don't think that'd be a safe thing. I mean, just think if, what if said agency all of a sudden was in a scandal, laid off all these people, and we know the CEO is getting a hefty bonus and a thousand dollars and that's coming from Reedfield. People might change their mind and say no to that agency. If it was in perpetuity because they voted on it three years in a row, I would feel pretty bad about that.
I mean, the board could every year review. I think, I think I see what Carol's asking. May, maybe having a list of things that go under one article because they've all been voted on.
What could the cat dragged in?
We just got your message.
But, um, so, so that's possible. Um, it is possible, but you want to do that through a policy discussion, a policy change. So we do have a policy on, on this exact matter. Um, so maybe the thing to do is I could bring that in the next meeting or put it in the packet or send it to you guys to review. Um, and you could decide whether you want to poke away at it or not. Um, but this is exactly the kind of discussion I was hoping for around the, the format of the, of the warrant. So it's good.
Uh, I'm going to take a brief interruption. So you've just got our message. So what we did was we voted to approve your liquor license and that we would sign it as soon as you finish the application. So if you want to walk over and sign it, then we'll all sign it.
And we get free drinks.
I have blue ink.
It's not important, you know, signing the document.
So for the members of the public who didn't see that, um, the, the owners of the Weathervein Restaurant, um, came in and we had already, uh, handled that item of business. So they are taking care of that and we will then assign it. Uh, so moving back on to the, uh, warrant thing, um, Eric, I know you mentioned that we're going to have multiple warrants at the bottom. Um, I think we also need to make a.
One of the quickest visits to a, to a select board meeting ever. Go ahead, get out of here.
I, I think we also need to do a good little article and then also in the newspaper. I I think we also need to do a good little article and then also in the newspaper um portion. The news print flyer that we send out explaining that um, we've made necessary legal or necessary mandated adjustments to these two warrants. And this warrant was just updated for language and grammar. So that it gives people a heads up on what they're reading for. And we had already talked about when we're doing that part, putting in the tracked changes. So that if we're taking out a word, it's stricken. And if we're adding something, it's stricken and added or just added, but so that people can see what the changes were. I think that's, I know we can't do it on the warrant, but we can do it ahead of time. I think that's that would be really helpful. And I I do like having those things at the end. Put the money first.
So we don't have to make any motions about the warrant. I think we're all seem to be happy with the process and the pace in which we're moving along with that.
Yep, and I think as we mentioned, you know, let's take into account the discussions we'd had earlier about looking at capital items, especially. Um, and asking, we don't really have to look at them that closely. We need to ask the Budget Committee to please follow that discussion and look at it so that when when it gets to us, that's already been considered and taken care of. Um, so are you good with that agenda item, Eric?
Yeah, no, I really appreciate the discussion and feedback. Um, and and we're gonna continue. We're gonna be going through several process it it or iterations of this. So um, this is a great start. Thanks.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next item, which is twenty-four dash oh six two, the administration ordinance. And this does have tracked changes and additions listed. So Eric, if you can give us highlights.
Uh, yeah, so just just some clarifications here, a few things um are needed. Included, so the the one point two that's a red. That uh essentially takes the place of what we had done on an annual basis relating to the um the payment of taxes. Uh, every year, the select board had put an order in place. And I believe that this would make it so that we don't have to do that and this would give you that ability. And and that way we don't have to do that on an annual basis. Um, and then uh one point five, a tax required property that's just not consistent with um our direction, um or state law. So that needs to be removed entirely and that will be replaced with its own separate ordinance for the um uh disposition of tax required property. One point six is new um language, but uh for this ordinance, but it was pulled, um, as I noted earlier, from the warrant. Um, so this takes something that that was voted on every year, um, always passed, is really um kind of administrative within the purview of the select board. Um, and so the voters can say, yes, the select board can spend grant funds for their intended purposes. Seems like a reasonable thing to ask.
Say it once.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Good idea.
So that's um, that's the substance of the changes other than one uh one ten. Which is unspecified salaries and wages. This is another one that was um or is currently voted on every single year as part of the town meeting warrant. But it really could um, and I think is better suited to being in ordinance form where the the voters would just acknowledge that, yes, um unless we specify otherwise, the select board has the ability to pay what they think ought to be paid. And then that's uh, that's it, other than um uh some typographical stuff, renumbering and all that.
I'm fine with that. My question is, is there anything else we can take out such as article three, four, five, six or not because they have specific dates in them?
Uh, the the dates always change, the uh interest rate changes and set by the Secretary of State. So I would say to those, no.
Okay.
That's a good reason why.
And that's a great reason why.
Yeah, so do we have to make a motion to just accept this?
Yes, because what we're gonna do with this then is say, hey, Eric already got one of our ordinances ready for the revision for the town meeting warrant. And then we can check it off the box.
So we could say, hey, okay, I I I would like to make a motion to accept revised ordinance for, what's wrong with this again?
Administration ordinance.
Administration ordinance.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to accept the revised administration ordinance. Is there any discussion? My discussion is, let's remember that we wanna put this copy out for people to read. We don't want it to clean it up yet.
Yeah, no, we we always do um both of those things, so yes.
Okay. Uh, so all those in favor in present and Carol?
Yes.
Yes, it is unanimous. We will move on to the next item, the last item, twenty-four, almost last. Twenty-four dash oh six three, consider draft revisions to the property tax assistance ordinance. Take it away, Eric.
Quick background, uh, this was started um uh after we sold a piece of tax-acquired property. Um, the proceeds from that were used to fund um to put in in reserve. And uh we were able to offer and have offered um a discount um or or a refund on tax payments to residents who who pay their taxes. And uh this just establishes how all of that happens, uh this ordinance. And so uh it was originally put in place, it does piggyback off of what used to be the Circuit Breaker Program. Um, is now called the Property Tax Fairness Credit Program. Recently, the state revised the amount of their um reimbursements under that program. So it seemed like opportune time to revise our program, um if if that's the direction the board wants to go in. Also, administratively, it was a bit clunky. It wasn't entirely clear. So I put in um uh starting in section four, some changes to to really help clarify what the date range is. Uh, we had it so that basically if you filed your taxes, um, uh, you know, I guess before um for the prior year, uh, and then you got them um done before April, I guess, uh whatever the the that tax day is, fifteenth, I think. Then then you didn't apply, uh, but you had to do it before August in order to get the refund. Um, and that didn't make a ton of sense. I didn't even really apply it that way. If someone applied in like September or October, I would run it because they they paid their taxes, they had a need. They were otherwise eligible. Um, so I just wanted to give that um expanded scope so that until the end of that year, um, you started filing for your next year's tax refunds um that that you could apply. So this really gives residents more um uh time to apply. It is in more in line with how we've actually been running the program. Um, and it does make a few other clarifications. Um, and one of the things that I added was um I felt halfway through that section four. Within fourteen days of receipt and application, that puts um a time limit on me to make sure I'm doing my job when I should. Uh, because I'll say in the past, I've let this stuff go for a month. Uh, and that's not really fair to people that are looking for a refund. Wasn't in any way specified, but I wanna make sure that we get it back to people in a timely fashion. Uh, and this is one way to do it. Let's see, and then no appeal. Um, we we do have um an appeals board, uh but administrative appeals like this uh really um I would think would be best left with the Board of Assessors. Um, I don't think there's a need to 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 ad nauseam, appeal, uh something like this because it's pretty cut and dry. I do have to review income um and and things like that. But really, the fact that the state of Maine um is the backbone for this program and it's, did you meet the state of Maine guidelines? Did you provide them all the documentation? If that's the case, it's really a yes or no for us. The only other question is is the um, you know, the median household income for the area. Uh, and that's set annually. So I don't think there's a need for anything more than that one level of appeal, and I wanted to specify that.
I like that because the Board of Assessors are the ones who talk about the taxes and set the tax rate. And they fix errors that have been pointed out by their assessing agent, so wouldn't this make sense?
Hope so.
Good.
Um, and then uh just some re-capitalization things, um uh eligibility, yeah, some chromatical stuff. Uh, the next big change is in the middle of section five, uh I'd be did look at increasing that from three hundred dollars to four hundred. Um, and that's the one thing that I'm not a hundred percent certain of. I don't know if the select board would like that more or less. I think it's um a a fair increase. It it probably doesn't necessarily keep pace with the amount of um benefit being offered by the state. But this is again a supplemental program. Um, and I think that it really, i- it's it's a good increase um when this was first adopted. But that that's a completely flexible number. Um, I just picked one that I thought was um in the right direction.
What was the year this was adopted? It probably says at the end.
Oh.
It does not.
Two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand eighteen, so.
Five years, yeah.
An eleven percent increase.
That covers like half of COVID. So we might wanna look at it more, but we also have a reserve that's limited. It was fifty thousand dollars and we've been chipping away at it and we haven't yet started putting money back into it. Um, I don't think we need to yet, but that's something else you wanna consider.
I would just consider making it four fifty or five hundred personally. If these people are meeting the guidelines, I think they can use it and we have the money and we're not using it for any other purpose.
What does the state recommend?
Uh, well, they don't recommend it, I guess, they they have a range of um, I think it's up to like two thousand dollars, but I I have to look back. This is just, this is just our piece that we just chose. You know, I won't say random, but um this is what we decided we wanted to offer to 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 on top of what their numbers were. But I can find that out for you, Dave. It's a good question.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
If we if we that was an easy benchmark to go by is what the state recommended of.
I think this is, because we we had originally, I think, said it, um, because there's that forty percent number, right? Forty percent of what the state awards or four hundred dollars or or three hundred dollars. Um, I think that that three hundred dollars might have been something.
Three sixty, three sixty.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah, or three sixty, excuse me. It was some percentage of what the state had done originally.
Pretty close to forty percent of two thousand.
Yeah, so.
And just so the for the public to know, this is a program that the state requires us to have?
It is not. It's completely voluntary.
Okay.
We had a lot of folks saying that they felt like they needed help with their taxes. Um, and we weren't allowed to have um our own just tax. We're able to give rebates, we're not able to give um a lower amount, right? So this is the way we could kind of work with the limits of the state constitution. We did look at that, we talked to the Secretary of State. And we said, isn't there a way to help out seniors? Isn't there a way to to do more? Um, and uh because um municipalities aren't allowed to levy their own income tax, um, we're also not necessarily able to um. There there's, I guess, I'll just back up and say that there's some limits with state law, but what we can do here. Um, and so this would fit within that.
This fifty thousand dollars was from the, this was the money that came from the foreclosure on the house, correct?
Yes, and we foreclosed on that from a bank, not from an individual, so we felt a lot less guilty about it.
Right, and so this was a a a property that had been defaulted on and the bank took it over. And we tried at least a dozen times to contact the bank who never paid any attention and never got in touch with us until months after the foreclosure. And so when we sold it, we didn't feel that we needed to just put that money, the select board being that we uh back into the general fund. That this was a a windfall from an unfortunate circumstance and how could we use it to help other people in an unfortunate circumstance? Um, and it's hardly had any use. People in this town do not, Rob Peel had a good point, people in this town do not want to ask for help. And so this is a program where people can ask for help, but they don't have to like come in and personally ask. They can kind of send in the documentation and then get a check. And so I think it's more comfortable for people. Um, and so that's why I don't have a problem with making this a slightly larger amount, considering the amount of inflation we've had, so.
No, I'm fine with that.
Just thought some history would help there.
Yeah, no, that's very helpful. I'm just pulling up the um the credits, uh the the application here so I can I'm proud to answer Dave's question directly. But um if you don't have any other questions on that, we could also move on.
Well, I just have two really quick questions related to raising the amount of money. Um, how much do we have left in that? Out of that fifty thousand dollars and how much did you, did we give out last year?
Uh, so last year, we gave out probably less than a thousand. Uh, it was only two applications.
Okay.
And uh I I I wanna see more people using this program because I think it's it's a good thing. Um, but I also do have concerns that once that money is gone, we're gonna have to find a way to fund it. And it um it could be an additional tax.
So how much is left? How much is left ballpark?
I'd say for forty-eight thousand, forty-seven thousand.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's it's a lot, but if you had a hundred people applying, it would go.
Eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. So in six years, we've spent two thousand dollars out of the money. I'm not worried about it running out.
Okay, so then then I, that's why I asked, yeah, I I'm fine with raising it to.
So the um the state, the state says um the 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 maximum credit is a thousand dollars for um a household under sixty-five or fifteen hundred over sixty-five.
And so then we're saying that we'll take the lesser of forty percent of the refund awarded by the state. So the maximum that could be would be forty percent of a thousand would be four hundred.
It would, yeah, yeah.
And forty percent of fifteen hundred would be.
Six hundred.
Six hundred. So if we may be five hundred, then for that retired couple, if they got the six.
To get a benefit, yeah.
The five hundred would be a little bit more.
And that seems reasonable, yeah.
Fine with that.
So I would take a motion to approve this with that change noted.
I'd make a motion to approve this ordinance for property tax assistance program with changing of the amount in section five B to five hundred dollars.
Second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those present in the room, those in favor? That is everyone. Carol?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Thank you, Carol. Uh, so now this is the time in the agenda for any other business or future agenda items?
We didn't do this page intentionally left blank yet.
Thank you. That's Carol's favorite page. Um, so I have an item that I want to bring up and um it concerns um our use of email amongst select board members. And we did have an email come through since our last meeting um from a select board member that was written to all select board members. And that violates the meeting rule. And the reason I'm choosing to bring it up um is because recently, over the past month or so, there's been quite a to-do in the paper, I believe it was in the city of Oakland. Which one?
Probably both.
I thought it was Winslow.
Okay, it was one of those towns up around the Waterville area.
Okay, sounds good.
Um, and it could have been Winslow, but there was uh the percent, well, the select board members did meet. There were more than three of them present. They did discuss town business. And someone complained and the town or city had to have their legal counsel look into it. And the complaining party also did, and it got in the papers. And I would like to keep Reed Field away from all of that experience. Um, so I will just remind us all that if you want to send an email to all, there is a way to do that. You can write an email to Eric and ask him to please send this out to the rest of the select board. And if Eric feels that it's appropriate subject matter, he can do that. Because then it's coming through him and it doesn't constitute a meeting. And if you're replying, you would be replying to Eric. Um, or you can write the same exact email and send it four times. Send it once to each member.
Right, exactly.
Um, and then that does not constitute a meeting. So we're not saying that you can't do that, but we do wanna make sure uh that we are doing the right thing and letting the public know that we are doing the right thing at all times. So I think that's important and I would thank all of us for no one responding to that, at least in a response. So, uh, I think that's important, and I would thank all of us for no one responding to that, at least in a respond all way, uh, because that protects all of us. So...
Thank you, Catherine, I think that was me, and I didn't even think of that. Um, and my goal was to send that to the committee, but when I went to the Fairgrounds Committee, and like, if, even if I touched, like, okay, I'm gonna send something to Jerry Bly, I couldn't copy his email, I could just send it to him individually, and there's, I don't know, fifteen or eighteen people on that committee, so I didn't even know how to get that, I guess I could have done it to Steve and to Jerry, um, and said disseminate that, but I just couldn't get to the meeting, and, um, usually they take questions at the end of the meeting, which, I'm thankful they do that, but... Um, so it didn't really need to go to the select board, I just didn't know how to go about that in lieu of trying to send it eighteen times to the members of the committee, so I don't know if there's a way... I don't, and maybe that's not even a valid way to do it, I, I, I don't think in those terms of... I, I, I didn't mean to do that on purpose.
No.
For pointing it out.
I appreciate that. Um, I think the best way to, for any member of the public to communicate with a committee is to send it to the chair, with a carbon copy to themselves and to the town manager, and ask that this issue be brought up with the committee. Um, and then if it's not brought up with the committee, you should know, um, and then we, you know, you have a, a reasonable request to say, I submitted a question, could it please be considered? And Eric is really good on following through on things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. Uh, so we are meeting again on the twenty-seventh, which is a Monday?
It is a Monday.
After Thanksgiving, and then we are meeting once in December, correct?
Just, just once for, um, select board, the media budget, but I'll, I'll check on that.
Okay, um, oh, and I, um, took it upon myself, and you guys can scold me if you want. Uh, but I, I'm in the town office often, I'm in town all the time, so I said to Steve that I would be happy to do the...
Please do that.
To do the weekly warrant, where it's the one-line item for the state warrant, that I will stop in and sign it. Because it's, it's easier for Teresa if it's signed the same day, and then she can send the bill out timely, and then it prevents you from having to always be here, and if I'm already here...
Because I'm not always here, so, the last couple of weeks of that day, I've been gone, and I knew, I, all in on that.
Okay, well, I don't mean to take anyone else's, um, fun away from them.
Right, so, so someone else enjoys it, you can do that during, not do it during their months, but...
Certainly want everyone else to have the chance to go through the warrants, and it's, it's very helpful, it, it really helps us understand the budget process more.
No, I like, I like doing that, but I, it's hard to get there the exact day sometimes.
Yeah, and I like the explanation of, these are all the things leaving town that we don't want, that was a good categorization today.
So I didn't check, the, uh, December eleventh is the, um, the next select order, or after, um, the twenty-seventh, and is the only one in December, so it's the quiet, or the storm.
Okay, so we have...
Enjoy it.
So we have two weeks, two weeks, and then January.
Okay.
Is anything else? Uh, want a motion to adjourn ten minutes early?
So moved, oh, so seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Online, Carol?
You bet.
Okay, night, everybody.